All right. Good evening, everyone. Time is 7:30. This is the regular council meeting for August 14th. I'm going to call this to order. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Counselwoman Erin?
Here.
Mayor Protemblis? Councilwoman Fleming?
Here.
Councilor Roebach? Councilman Soltis?
Here.
Councilor Wright?
Here.
Mayor Graves?
I'm here, thank you. Can I please have a motion to excuse Mayor Protemblis and Councilor Roebach? They did give notice.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Make a motion that we excuse Mayor Protemblis and Councilor Roebach.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support?
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. They are excused. The invocation and pledge of allegiance this evening is going to be led by Councilwoman Erin. I invite you to stand if you would like.
Father God, I pray that you will guide council tonight as we meet and discuss matters with regard to our city. Lord, I pray we choose to do what is that which is right and which is moral and rational. I pray that our motivation in everything we do is suitable for the public and not our own agenda. I ask that we act in good judgment, lead without bias, and work to do the best of our ability for every person within the city. Amen. Our Father, our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Up first, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to make an addition that we appoint Erica...I'm sorry, just had it. Forgive me. That we appoint Erica Morgan as magistrate for the 43rd District Court under R1.
Okay.
And also a motion to add to the report from the City Attorney and Council for MMRMA regarding pending litigation of Chad Garner versus the City of Madison Heights under reports for R2.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to add these on. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Those items are added on. Are there any other additions or deletions this evening? All right, seeing none, we are going to move into public hearing. This is...first up is from the City Planner, PEE 23-01, the alley vacation, the 17-foot wide alley between 601 West 12 Mile and 28767 Dartmouth.
The Community and Economic Development Department has received a request to vacate 17-feet-wide improvement alley right-of-way between 601 West 12 Mile Road...that's the BP on 12 Mile...and 28767 Dartmouth Road. The alley also provides access to the property at 611 West 12 Mile Road, former Marinelli's. All adjacent property owners have signed this petition. The Planning Commission had a public hearing and heard this on July the 18th of 2023. Members unanimously approved that City Council postpone the action of vacating this alley until the Planning Department staff received several items. All of those items have now been received by the staff with the exception of a DTE facility relocation. Therefore, if council wishes to vacate this alleyway, the motion should reflect that based upon the Planning Commission's recommendation and staff now receiving all the outstanding items, approval would be conditional upon that DTE facility relocation.
All right. I'm going to take a motion from council and then I'm going to open the public hearing. So what is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we proceed along as read by the City Manager with the motion to vacate the property in accordance with all of the conditions, including the relocation of DTE.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
All right, thank you. So before I ask for council's discussion, I'm going to open the floor to the public to speak. I will open for the public to speak later on other items, but right now, if anyone wishes to speak regarding this specific item, I invite you to the podium.
Okay, good evening. I'm trying to say my name and everything.
Just if your name and address, your relationship to this.
Kathy Sapien, 28636, much-aligned Dartmouth, soon to be improved, hopefully. Concerned why...what are they going to do with this? Is it going to be another drive-through like we have the Tim Hortons where we can't get out in the morning because, you know, traffic backs up? What are they going to do with this? I mean, there's nothing there. It's not bothering anyone. I mean, the city could clean it up once in a while. And then what's the deal with the house? Are they going to knock that down to make more room? Now they're going to encroach on the houses that we have already. You know, we have Home Depot, Lowe's, you know, I got everything right there. We've been the service drive for I-75 for three years. So what are they going to do with that? You know, they don't want it for just anything. Do they have plans? I think the board or whoever should find out why do they want that. And if it's a drive-through, that's not good. We already have enough traffic and we don't need houses to be knocked down to make more room for more businesses. We have enough. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening regarding this? Please.
Hi, my name is Sarah Broderson. I live at 28037 Dartmouth and I work at the BP right where we're talking about this happening. And just between...I'm sure all of you know, just between the highway and now this going out...sorry, with Dartmouth, she's right. What will happen with all the traffic? Because right now, working at the gas station, I see at least three accidents a day of people...they don't know...they already don't know where to go at this corner. Where are those people going to go? I have police in my parking lot almost every day doing accident reports and people are getting off the expressway where they've had accidents to safe haven with us so they can have somewhere to speak with police and figure things out after they've had this accident. What's going to happen with all of us and our safety? It's a very large neighborhood. It's a great neighborhood. It's safe. I have two dogs. There's lots of kids that come and run around. And, yeah, I'd just like to know as well what would happen with all that traffic at that location because it's already very congested.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak regarding this? Please?
My name is Tim. Mr. I have the property adjacent to the building you're talking about, 28757 Dartmouth. And I actually looked at the site plans and it looks totally like if that's the preliminary one. I would just worry about public safety and, you know, what you guys are actually going to do there because of...put yourself in our position where, you know, if it was your house, would you want that next to it? So basically, I know progress takes discourse. Things happen. But if you look at that site plan and, you know, my property, it just doesn't jive. It's, you know, it's almost like it's an embarrassment. So, thank you.
I'm sorry, can you...your property...what is your property?
28757.
And that's a home?
Dartmouth.
That's a home?
Dartmouth.
Okay. Thank you. So just to clarify, the three of you live there. Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? All right, then I'm going to close public hearing and open up discussion among council.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like the record to reflect that in order to vacate any alley, you're going to need five votes.
All right, thank you. Is there any comments from council?
I have a question, Your Honor.
Please.
So just kind of for our staff, just for clarity, it sounds like the recommendation was to move ahead with some conditions, correct? Be able to relocate the DTE facility and some other conditions?
Yes, thank you, council. The motion from the Planning Commission was to...they recommended that council postpone action on it until three items were taken care of. One was that a minimum 15-foot wide...we actually recommend a 17-foot wide alley for the entire width of the alley be dedicated and recorded on the property, which would benefit both the City of Madison Heights and all the utility companies. The second was to coordinate with DTE, who has overhead utility lines within the alley, to relocate those lines. DTE had indicated that they were not in support of an easement, however, that they would be in support of conversations with the applicant to relocate those to another property. And the third was the submittal of a concept plan for the proposed development, which has been provided in your packet. So two of the three have been satisfied, at least according to the Planning Commission recommendation. The DTE relocation, we feel comfortable, if you want to move forward with it, conditioning approval on the resolution of that situation, the relocation of the DTE lines.
Okay. And I just have one follow-up question, I guess, for legal. So technically, well, I guess we have five, so.
Well, you have five. Another alternative might be until...it would be to table the matter until you have all the information in front of you. Matt, do we have written easements, that are drafted easements already or not?
Not yet. That would be with the property...once the property is...or the easement is vacated, getting that through Oakland County equalization and getting our engineer to draft up the easement legal descriptions.
Well, when you say that that's dependent on the alley being vacated, I mean, those can happen simultaneously, can they not?
Yeah.
They can provide us with proposed easements that we can review and approve?
Well, we...
For submission?
Sure. We, as a city, would be drafting the language essentially because we...Department of Public Services is requiring a 17-foot wide easement over the property before we vacate...or as part of the vacation. So the city would maintain a 17-foot wide public utility easement if the valley is vacated. But yeah, you're absolutely correct. We can work on those concurrently.
Right. And what about DTE? What are they requiring?
DTE has to work with the applicant, who I believe is here, to work on a solution for the relocation, which is why any condition needs to have that DTE in there. If DTE doesn't allow for the relocation, I'm not sure that the concept plan is presented could move forward.
And has the applicant already reached agreement with Comcast and any other remaining utility companies?
Those...Comcast and DTE share poles. So any relocation of the DTE poles would also carry with it the Comcast relocation. Every other utility has indicated, as long as they have an easement over the vacated alley, that they're comfortable with the alley vacation.
Okay.
I have a question, Your Honor. Do I need...if I wanted to make a motion to table, it would have to withdraw my motion or just?
Someone else can make a amended motion.
And we do have...just sorry to clarify, we do have the applicant...or at least representatives of the applicant here, if you do have any specific questions regarding their conversations with DTE or regarding the concept plan that was presented.
Mr. Fleming, you have something?
Yes. Okay, so I have a question about the...right now, 601 12 Mile Road has a exit, has two entrances on it. One is 12 Mile and the other one is Dartmouth. And I'm very familiar with this because I drive...I live south of Dartmouth...I mean, south of 12 Mile, and I drive that to get to Home Depot or anything else like that. And I understand, just like the residents do on Dartmouth, that the traffic, it's very backed up there and it's very complex at that intersection. So my question is, is that since you kind of have more than one property at 601 West 12 Mile, will they...maybe we can close...if they were to progress further on this and it was approved, would they change...maybe close off the Dartmouth, you know, exit and only use one exit on 12 Mile instead? That's something I'm asking.
Yeah, so the concept plan presented is just that. It's a concept plan. We...staff at least feels the same way for safety purposes, not to have two curb cuts that close to one another. However, all of that would need to take place through our site planning, potentially rezoning, if they're including any adjacent properties as well. Planning Commission wanted to have a general idea of what the plan was and why the alley was being vacated. There are certainly other issues like access and exit driveways that would need to be addressed as part of our normal site planning process.
Your Honor?
Yes.
When I'm looking at this, and I thank all of those that have already spoken, I am concerned when it comes to having an alleyway next to a residential home. We've discussed other businesses and why we couldn't have those businesses because they were next to a residential home. And at this alleyway, you're looking at more traffic and more noise coming back and forth. If, you know, that was my home on that corner, I would be very upset because, you know, it just is alluding to a lot of people possibly driving through, a hangout spot, you know, just more noise control that we will have no control over and sending out our police department to stop the interference of noise in that case. And currently, when you are...and I...the young lady that came from BP, she's absolutely right. When you're coming out of there, because 12 Mile, the I-75 is closed right now, the traffic is not as heavy because you don't have people coming off both north and south. But when it starts to open back up, it's really difficult getting across 12 Mile coming out of BP. It's difficult getting on the 12 Mile coming out of Tim Hortons. So...and I know a lot of times people cut through the Home Depot and the Lowe's to try to get onto John R. So I think that we're opening up a gateway for heavier traffic and more noise. So...and to have all of this contingent upon DTE is another issue in its own self. But I just wanted to say, I'm not really feeling this.
So, Mr.?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I think we were on the same page.
Did you want to make a substitute motion?
I would like to make a substitute motion that we move forward tabling this indefinitely or until the next meeting.
You need to put a date on it. Yeah. If you table it indefinitely, it isn't coming back. So you need to put a date.
Okay.
Postpone it date specific.
Postpone.
I would like to make a motion that we table this until...
No, the wording, sorry, actually is postpone because there's a difference.
I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this until the September 11th meeting as a substitute motion.
All right. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Is that the long enough for the CED to make a plan?
Your Honor, before a vote, I just recommend if you have questions for the applicant or if you would like to invite them up to maybe answer or provide any clarification, they are here and willing to come up to the podium.
I have a few more questions. Is it still open?
It is not. So, no, no, I appreciate...I appreciate what you had to say. So this is...this is a scheduling question.
And...
So you're saying the 11th?
Yes.
Or do we have a planning meeting before that? Because I think I'd like this to come back to planning, see if we can get this DTE taken care of and make sure that our residents' concerns are heard. So, I think legal as well.
Based upon your comment, then it would be...you'd need another substitute motion to send it back to planning.
Well...
I would like to, Your Honor, I would like to remove my prior motion and make a motion to send this back to the Planning Commission.
Okay. So do we need to put a date on when we're going to look at this or this is just a straight-up after planning?
No, it would be just sent back to planning.
Okay.
And then the applicants can provide planning with all of the additional information and then planning can make a recommendation to council and it will come back when...after planning has seen it.
Your Honor?
Hold on. So we have a substitute motion on the floor right now. So are you going to support that or if you want to have this discussion?
Yeah, I want to support it.
Okay, all right.
But I also want to make a comment.
Okay, well, hold on, hold on. Okay, so we now have a substitute motion, which is that this is going to go back to planning, okay?
Yeah, I mean, the memo we got says that the Planning Commission is waiting for all this information. So, I mean, that's all we can do anyhow.
Well, Steph has received it all except for the DTE facility relocation.
Yeah. All right. Is there anything else, Mr. Wright, that you want? Okay. And, all right, so go back to planning. The only thing we're waiting on, it sounds like, is from DTE. So this will give the applicant time to work with DTE and to perhaps address some of the concerns that the residents are sharing as well.
And it's possible...I'm not sure what the update is on DTE. It's possible they have an update with that tonight. But without the DTE, the DTE is the missing piece here, Your Honor, so.
Unfortunately, right now in the city, DTE is missing a lot.
Yeah.
So we're just going to wait on that. Okay.
Madam Mayor, plus with this additional information, planning will then have all the additional information and can then make a recommendation to council as to how to proceed.
Okay.
And since it requires a vote of five, it'll give the full council opportunity to have their voice heard instead of having two absent.
Yeah. For those of you who don't regularly attend or watch our meetings, we generally have seven council members. We are shy to this evening. All right, is there any other discussion on the substitute to send this back to planning? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against say no. All right. So we are just postponing this for a little bit. Thank you, everyone who came out to speak. And residents, please check with Matt about when the next Planning Commission meeting is. So if you want to speak here.
That's the second.
All right. Okay, and now I'm going to open this meeting to the public. So you are welcome to speak on anything you would like. I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, that you address me, that you speak at the podium, give your name, address, or any affiliation with the city.
Martha Covert, Edward Avenue. Well, I'm glad everybody's talking about DTE. A very good friend of mine had the wires pulled off the back of her house Friday morning. The live wires were there. Our fire department did their job and went out. DTE came out today. They left that all this time. Said it wasn't an emergency. She has a special needs child. She has air oxygen machine that she needs to sleep with. DTE told her it was not an emergency. It was not. She had power. Power lines laying across your table and on your garage. And I know you guys, I know. There's...you guys don't run DTE. I understand this. But is there anything that our city can do to help in a situation like this? Because now they're saying during, oh, they should have made you leave your house. Well, the firemen called DTE right from her driveway and DTE said it wasn't an emergency. What? Is there any remedy for our city? This is crazy and it's getting worse.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak this evening? All right. Okay.
Hi, Chris Webster, 28747 Dartmouth. The issue of the property on 12 Mile, is that squashed for the night? Because I have major concerns with that, with the traffic on our street.
So you did miss...you did miss the comments for that, but you can speak about it if you would like now.
Okay, because traffic is...there's times where we can't even back out of our driveway. It is horrendous. People hanging out there, I think, will be a major issue. We've had issues with that at Marinelli's before. Yeah, I see a lot of concerns with it. If they're going to proceed with it, if there's an exit onto Dartmouth, I mean, it's going to be atrocious. As opposed to coming in and off of 12 Mile, if it is going to go forward, that'd probably be the way, I don't know, for our neighborhood. It's just...it's bad. It's really bad. I know you said you drove through there. There's times where it's literally all the way down the entire block of Dartmouth. So that's really all I have.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening on any topic? All right, Mr. Sanders, we will wait.
Hello, my name is Paul Sanders. I live at 26433 Brialto Street. Obviously, our city's got problems. One of the major ones is because you're in charge, you're the mayor. When are we going to get 12 Mile Road back under I-75? Please, yes, you can make differences. We had problems with DTE for years and our city went to bat for us. And we haven't had as many electrical problems as we used to. Start kicking some rear end. You got...don't you have a Democratic governor? Aren't we basically a Democratic area? Yeah, we are. There's a lot of Democrats in this area. Not all of us, but there's a lot. And there's a lot of pull there. Do what you can, but please, really, when are we going to get 12 Mile back? I've been traveling on 12 Mile since I was a little kid back in 1956. It's been, well, messed up for the last two years. Would you please get a hold of our city and our state and please, can we get something under the 12 Mile, I-75? Is that that hard to come up with? Okay, that's all.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? All right, then I am going to close public comment. And we're going to move to the consent agenda. There are four items this evening. First up, Emily Rees, the resignation from the Human Relations and Equity Commission, Angela Freeman resignation from the Library Advisory Board, City Planner, the Safe Streets for All SS4A Cost Sharing Agreement, and the regular city council meeting minutes of July 24th. Can I get a motion, please?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the four items as listed.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
A motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Those are approved. And then we have the two reports, starting with report R1 regarding the magistrate. Do you have a motion?
I don't really have a report, other than Hazel Park's magistrate resigned. And so this is a request from the judge in Hazel Park to appoint Erica Morgan as the magistrate in Hazel Park 43rd District Court. Since we are part of the 43rd District Court system, we are required to approve this appointment, although they primarily will work in Hazel Park.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we accept the appointment of Erica Morgan for magistrate for 43rd District Court in Hazel Park.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, she, she's not here tonight?
She is not here tonight.
Does she know about the, this vote tonight?
I don't know. I was notified about this late on Friday. All right. Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against, say no. All right, motion carries. And then our two, Mrs. Marsh, can you just give the wording that we would need for that, please, or?
I gave my wording away, so I'll defer to Cheryl.
Oh, okay.
I can read it into the-
Okay.
It would be a motion to approve the recommendation of the city attorney and council for MMRMA regarding pending litigation in Chad Garner versus City of Madison Heights.
All right, thank you. And can I get a motion to approve?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against, say no. Motion carries. It is approved. And with that, we have finished the meeting, and I invite closing comments, starting from Councilman Aaron.
Thank you, Your Honor. I only have one thing. This coming Wednesday, the Library Advisory Board will be beginning our series on adult financial literacy. The library board has teamed up with Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union, and we're going to have four seasons, four sessions, that we feel will be very beneficial to those here in Madison Heights and even abroad. Our first session is on raising a financially literate family. That's August 16th. On August 23rd, we'll be doing loan and credit basics. September 6th, we're going to do home buyers. And this is going to be a real good one about home buyers, because buying a house is not as easy as it sounds. You have to go through a whole lot of stuff. I remember almost crying, well, actually, I did cry a couple of times trying to purchase a home. I'm like, come on, I work every day. And then September 20th, we're going to talk about how to grow your own money locally. That's how to spend money right here and support the small businesses in Madison Heights, to help those here in the city. You know, we have all these small businesses, and if we can get more mom and pop shops in the city and get the money here in the city and help grow our city. And those courses will be held by Colleen Godfrey, and she is the Consumer Education Specialist for Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union. And dinner, or should I say, refreshments will be provided at all sessions. So we'll be right at the library at 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM every night. So we'll probably run for like 6 to 8. Okay? So if you can, please come on out. I'm sure you will find something to learn, something really great during this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wright?
Yeah, that's fantastic. I encourage everyone to go out to that. Back at the end of July, I got the opportunity to go out with the Active Adult Commission and take a bus tour for the Beautification Awards. And it was fantastic because we got to go around the city and see some of the immaculate landscaping we have in some residents in the city. And I believe we'll be awarding that either next meeting or not, the following. So I would encourage everyone to come on out and support them. And, you know, the thing I enjoyed about this the most, besides seeing their yard, was recognizing how it, we all get the reward of seeing that and living in a community just a little bit brighter, a little bit better. And, you know, we take pride in ownership in our community. So I'm excited to see who actually wins it, because there's some tough competition. There's some landscapers in our community. So with that, I know that they also said goodbye to the old Active Adult Center at the end of July. And that was pretty sad. So that facility had been around for, is, has been around for 47 years. So, you know, a lot of folks have come through the doors of that facility, and a lot of memories have been made there. And, you know, I know there's a lot of reminiscing that probably is going to go on and did go on, and, you know, but it just brings me to look forward to the excitement of the new campus of the Active Adult Center. I know we're wrapping it up. Things are getting done, and so it'll be fun. I want to say thank you to, I know John, if you don't know, John is the driver of the buses, and he is a fantastic young man. And he actually, he drove the bus for the HREC's Jewish Historical Tour in Detroit. And so he did a phenomenal job navigating the city. And that event was fantastic. It's a part of this idea that the HREC is trying to approach, talking about culture from, is where cultures intersect. And so we did a bus tour through Detroit. And there are two lectures. One was last Wednesday, and there's actually another one that is this Thursday, the day after the Financial Literacy event. So I want to encourage people to come out. It was very informative for me. I did not realize that there were so many cultural places that overlap for so many within the city of Detroit that we drive past every day, like at the riverfront, or, you know, driving down to how some of the churches were originally synagogues. Like all of that history is what kind of binds us all together. So it was fantastic to see that. And one of the things, two, one thing spurred from that trip was the idea of maybe planning a historical tour through Eastern Market. And as a part of that trip, we had, when we started talking about it in February, we talked about also doing a trip to the Wright Museum or the Charles H. Wright Museum. So stay tuned for that. That's more to come on that. The HREC is really, we're really trying to broaden our horizon, to focus on events and things that everyone would like to participate in. We're going to have two in September that we're planning. The first is where the goal is, call it Motorama, Madison Heights Motorama in Smoke, a car show and a cooking competition with cornhole. It should be fun for the whole family. And the other is going to be a plant sale on the 17th. So look out for those events as they start to come together and crystallize a little bit more. Other than that, I would just say, let's just all remember to be kind. You know, it's hard out here for a lot of people. You know, we all talk about mental health, but like, I hope that we all can just see the human in each other. And that was really what I took away from that bus tour, is remembering that we all have a story. So that's all I have. I'll pass it along.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sherman?
Yes, Your Honor, very briefly. You know, oftentimes, life is like a two-sided coin, good, bad, sweet, sour, yin yang, if you're into Asian philosophy. And what Martha said is true. I mean, this area has seen more than its share of power outages and issues with DTE. But there's always another side to, we had an issue that came up with Civic Center, with the Civic Center project, and DTE was very responsive to our request. So there's always, you know, push and pull, good and bad with it. And they responded properly, and we ironed out the issue. And the project is moving forward to completion, thanks to Melissa and others.
Thank you. Mrs. Marsh?
I have just a couple of things. Next Monday, on the 21st, at 5:30, we are going to have the fire station, too, ribbon cutting. So that's the fire station on John R. We welcome everyone to come out for that. And then tentatively planned for September the 18th, now that DTE has worked with us and reconnected the electricity here, we are going to have the grand, grand opening event of the Civic Center complex. So there will be a soft opening of the Active Adult Center, but the grand opening will be on, hopefully, September the 18th at 5:30. So there will be staff available for tours. There will be raffles and some fun things going on there. So I encourage you, if you can, to attend that. Also, Madison Heights is working with Oakland County Veterans Services and Forgotten Harvest to bring a veterans' food distribution event. It's free of charge. It'll be August the 31st, from 9:00 AM to noon. You can register either by going to Oakland County Veterans Services webpage, or feel free to contact the city, and we can help you get registered. Veterans are also eligible to receive an Oakland County Parks vehicle permit passed for free that does not expire until 2029. And they will, can also receive a military appreciation voucher. So if you are a veteran living in Madison Heights, I would encourage you to take advantage of these. And feel free to reach out, check out our website, check out Oakland County's Veterans Services, or reach out to the city manager's office, and we can get you connected.
All right, thank you. Anything from the clerk's office this evening?
Yep. Just a reminder that the next round of appointments for our boards and commissions will take place at our next meeting, so that if you have any interest in serving on a board or commission, please fill out an application and submit it online or to the clerk's office. A list of vacancies is available on our website. And even if there's not a vacancy in a board that you're interested in, please consider applying, because we get vacancies all the time. And we keep those applications for a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fleming?
Yeah, just one item. On September the 9th, around noon, it's going to be noon to about 2:00, just before the Trail Tunes in Rosie's Park, we're going to be having the canine demonstration put on by the police department and the crime commission. And it should be a great time, you know, to see how the police canines are worked and by their handlers. And I can't wait. Hopefully, nobody gets hurt, you know? It's always fun to watch the officers work with them and stuff. But yeah, that's all I have for tonight.
Anything else?
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. I want to thank everyone who came out to speak this evening. I appreciate that. It's really important that we hear what our residents have to say. And I, I know that a lot of people, myself included, are frustrated with DTE. And all I can tell you is that we're working on it, and that, you know, I'm making the calls. And obviously, this weekend, there were things going on at City Hall that they stepped up and they took care of that, and we do appreciate that. I, you know, it's not our thing. They have the way that they work these things. And all I can do is I can pass on messages, and I can try and be a squeaky wheel as much as anybody else. And sometimes it works, and sometimes it doesn't. As for 12-mile opening, I believe that is in September. Is that correct?
First, end of August, first part of September.
All right. It's coming. This August, yes. This August. So sometime in the next few weeks. And yes, I have no control, none of us have here have control over that. I, if we did, if I did, it wouldn't have shut down. But you know what? We all want our roads to be fixed. We want things to be upgraded. And it's like doing construction at your house. Somebody wants that brand-new kitchen. You know you don't have your kitchen for a month while it's being worked on. And it's the same thing with our roads. We all complain about the horrible shape that our roads are in, and then we all sit there and we complain that the roads are shot. We can't have it both ways. So I get it. I'm as frustrated as everybody else. And on, so on September 9th, we are having our Trail Tunes. The Arts Board is putting that on. And I just want to shout out to Michael Covert for the work that he did on Friday night, organizing a fundraiser, the Off the Trails fundraiser for that. I was able to stop by, and they had some really good gift baskets. And so I just want to give a shout out to Mr. Covert for working on that. I know he's put a lot of time and energy into it. Our next council meeting is going to be on August 28th, and the time is 8:10. So this is adjourned. Good night.